All right, for a pleasant reason. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, business, liberty, and justice for all. This is the regular meeting for April 17, 2018. We have a guest attorney, Mitch Kozroba. For those who don't or unfamiliar with Mitch, who is normally the attorney for the planning board. There's a clerk, please call the clerk.
Alden Kuyan.
Here.
Carriga. Halleran.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis. Moranti.
Here.
Diza. Rosenthal.
Here.
Sarar.
Here.
Volo.
Here.
DPHR.
Here.
Corin Preston.
I'd like to entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the March 20 meeting and place the amendment on file. Do I have an introduction? Rob? And...
Tucker?
DeJuan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of March 31, 2018, and place it on file. Do I have an introduction? Eileen, a second. John. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. Copies of committee reports are on your desks. May I have, excuse me, an introduction and a second to place the committee reports on file? Introduction? Rob, a second. DeJuan, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a communication from Stewart's, which you received, that includes a copy of a host agreement related to the request for the zoning amendment for the area on Chesapeake and the Florida Green. May I have a motion? I'll remind you, this is merely to accept the communication. It has no other implications, pro or con. May I have a motion and a second to receive the communication and place it on file? Introduction? Kamal, and a second by John. All in favor, say aye. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Bills. Any questions about the bills? If you want, I got that big number there. We were going to be able to talk to the person from guard tonight. That's our assessment. Associates. Any questions from the council? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion, an introduction, and a second. Rob, introduce, a second. Eileen, a roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain. And for those who are new here tonight, it has been the policy of the chair to abstain unless there is a tie vote or a vote requires more than a simple majority. The next resolution, oh, it's first resolution, appointing the commissioners of the deeds. Roll call vote.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
Okay. The next resolution is a resolution with regard to de minimis voluntary payments to the city of Hudson. Any questions from the council? We talked about this at the informal meeting. For the public, it's about when people make overpayments, about a very limited group of payments, sort of expediting how you deal with the overpayment. Would you like to explain it more, Rob, or...
Sure, sometimes there may be a fee that is, the fees that are excluded would be real property tax or would be any parking violations, but any other city fees that are received by the city clerk, if they're overpaid, what this does is, instead of the city clerk having to have an administrative burden of providing change back to that person that paid that bill via the mail, it becomes a voluntary payment to the city.
Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution accepts donations on behalf of the fire department. Can I have a roll call vote?
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution authorizes a loan from the general fund to the sewer fund for the Front Street Stormwater Separation Project. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo. Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a retainer agreement for the labor law council. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
Okay. Before we talk about the next resolution, I'd like to propose a couple of things. First, let me say that I would like for the council to have its own public hearing on the proposed boundaries for the new historic district, which would mean we would not vote on this tonight, but we would have our own public hearing, which would include a presentation by the Historic Preservation Commission. And the reason I'm proposing this, a number of reasons. There are some problems with the proposal, not the resolution as written by Mitch, but with some of the documents that were submitted. For, just to give one quick example, the documents identify the western side of Worth Avenue as within the boundaries of the new district. However, no one on Worth, on that side, the 13 houses there, were notified. So my feeling is that if we have our own public hearing at a proper time, which is, say, our normal seven o'clock evening meeting, rather than 10 o'clock on a Friday morning, it will provide a greater opportunity to the community to actually express what they feel about this boundary proposal. So I'm asking for a motion to table this for the time being, and then we will schedule a public hearing. I need a motion table. Do I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Where did we need to vote?
I just need to hear for the second ones.
Oh, it was John.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, then I need a motion to have a public hearing, and we'll do it at our informal meeting next month. Do I have a motion for that? Eileen, a second. Dominic, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Yes, Eileen.
I would, like to say, support it this way going forward, obviously, but I want to make sure, my feeling is that it won't be a vote by show of hands. And what I mean by that is, if we don't have a lot of the public show up, I don't think that necessarily means they're for it or against it. And I think if it doesn't, like the Fifth Ward doesn't affect them right now directly, that's kind of what they elect us to reflect. So I just want to say, I think another public hearing is good. There's been much more going on. I know when Phil and I had a meeting the other day, just some of the things that he said to me about what is and isn't something that they would get involved with, it was helpful. So I support this, but it's, I don't think the numbers, I think we vote for it.
I think, you know, we're tasking the HPC with a presentation, they'll begin with a presentation, and I'm hoping that we have more notice in general, so people show up. I should mention, there were 10 emails sent to me in support of this proposal, but notably, none of them were from the actual district under consideration. So moving right along. I'm sorry, we're not taking public comment. The time limit for public comment.
Tom, can I say something?
Sure.
So I also, you know, just, I'll speak for myself as the first word representative. I received a lot of telephone calls, some emails in support. I didn't hear of anybody that was not supportive within the ward, and, you know, I appreciate the public hearing, and I can understand why we want to have a second public hearing. I just would like to be on record to say that, again, this is a correction to a previous resolution passed in 2006, and it does beg, you know, having conversations with some of my other council members, it begs a bigger question of, hopefully this will urge the council as a whole to look at the zoning laws and the comprehensive plan of the city to address the city as a whole and not take this as an individual one-off every time either planning zoning or HPC has it in hand.
I agree, and I will pass along an introduction to the HPC about what seem to be apparent errors in the documents that have been submitted in support, so that they have time to do a more proper proposal. Also, I suggest that they include an actual map with properties on it, rather than just a block diagram of areas affected. But we can talk about that another time.
Could I?
Yes, sure.
I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying at the end. When you said look at zoning, to do it all at once and not one at a time?
Well, this is a correction to a resolution from 2006 to correct a memo that didn't perhaps get translated into a map correctly. But I think, you know, more and more of what we see, when you go to a zoning meeting or an HPC meeting or a planning meeting, we have code on the books that contradict instead of complement, and maybe if we, you know, as a whole, look at the comprehensive plan and dust that off and try to attack this in a more macro level as opposed to a micro level.
The reason I want...
In addition to that, because this is very important to me as a constituent.
And the reason I wanted to be clear, because when you said do the whole, the concern for the input that I had from the folks in the Fifth Ward is about it gradually coming out, and all of Hudson is part of the historic district, and I don't have...
That's not what I mean, no. I mean the comprehensive, like, all the code that's on the book, that perhaps is not working for people when they have to get variances and other things, that we look at that as a whole.
Good, that's why I wanted to...
Thank you. For the sake of putting it in the records, let me just give the names of the, or should I just hand you the names of the emails, I don't know if that'd be good enough, or I'll read them. Maurice and Merrick, these are all in support of the proposition, by the way. Maurice and Marina Houghton, Whitney Wilkins, Karen Smith, Sophie Henderson, Peter Young, Rhodes Adler, James Brodsky, Michael Colbert, John Shovell, and Daniel Schmider. Okay, moving on to approving the 2017 firefighter listing pursuit into the service of water program. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
Excuse me. The last resolution that's already on our agenda, authorizing a transfer of funds for the youth department accounts. We talked about this at the informal meeting, just catching up with bills from 2017. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo. Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
Okay, now we have some new resolutions. As was presented at the meeting, though we didn't have the document in front of us at the time, and we've since been sent it, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding accepting donations from the Friends of Hudson to Hudson Youth, to the Hudson Youth Department. As we, as you know, or may have heard at the informal, Peter Frank has established a non-for-profit that will be dedicated to supporting the youth program or the youth of the city of Hudson, and this memo of understanding sets forth its desire to make donations to the Hudson Youth Department. So I'll need, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
On the MOU, there's a lot of things crossed out, and I want to know if that is a mutual agreement between the mayor and Peter Frank, the president?
Yes. It was all, yeah, I don't know why we got the red line copied, but, yeah, that was all, that's all. You can ignore the crossed out parts. Do we need an introduction? Any other questions from the board? Can I counsel on that? Can I have an introduction? Rob? And a second? Eileen? And a roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo. Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution, pretty simple, it's a resolution appointing members to the Hudson Conservation Advisory Committee. These are two members whose terms were set to expire on May 31, and both would like to be reappointed, Michael O'Hara and Holly Gardner. Do I have an introduction? Any questions from the council? An introduction? Rich? A second. John? A roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
This next, excuse me, this next resolution authorizes the city treasurer to direct a transfer of funds from, following budget accounts as follows for the Public Works Department, to, oh, I'm sorry, to the cemetery's Department. From the personal services to office supply, from personal services to house maintenance. Do I have an introduction? Eileen, a second. Rob? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution authorizes the Conservation Advisory Committee to retain a summer intern. This is pretty simple, it just, it's from their budget, it's from their grant budget, and it just allows them to hire Shannon Doyle as an intern, and you see the amount there, and any questions from the council? Can I have an introduction? Rich, a second from Kamal. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution, kind of resolution we always like, is to accept a donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department, $75 from Amanda and Anthony Miller. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Rob? Rich? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution authorizes the sale of city-owned vehicles and equipment. These are all, you see the inventory attached. These are, the city is in possession of several vehicles and equipment that are no longer used by the DPW Police and Fire Department, and, maybe I'll read this entire thing. It is in the best interest of the city to have said vehicles and equipment sold at a public auction to the highest open market offer. The Department of Public Works has reviewed and compared several auction providers and determined that auctions international will offer the most comprehensive auction service. Do I have any questions from the council? You want some time to look over? Do I have an introduction and a second? DeJuan? Eileen? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for construction services to CBBG Stormwater Separation, as an A, by the way, project. As you all know, we're in the process of upgrading our stormwater project, this is for, to move the money along in the process. Any questions? Can I have an introduction and a second? Eileen, a second? Kamal? Kamal? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
This next resolution is fairly technical, but pretty simple. At the same time, it authorizes the city, the mayor, to execute the undertaking for the benefit of New York Department, New York State Department of Transportation. It has to do with being able to go under certain properties controlled by DOT related to the same, um... DOT, um, what is it? State highway improvement. Any questions?
So this gives us the, I'm sorry, this gives us the opportunity to, to be allowed with five days' notice to go under any of the state highways, like Taconic, if there's a water problem or a race.
No, I thank you for that. I tell you, the problem getting these late resolutions, they're complex and some of the guards. Do I have an introduction and a second? Rob? Eileen? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
The last resolution is another welcome contribution, in this time to the Department of Youth, have received $100 donation from Woody, Debbie, and Matthew Sweet in memory of Jason Sweet. This is a resolution to accept that contribution. Can I have an introduction and a second? Can I have an introduction and a second? Kamal? Eileen? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
Okay, proposed local laws, to be discussed both of these in our informal. The first, it extends an exemption on real property taxes for real property owned by veterans who rendered military service during the Cold War, pursuant to New York, real property tax law, section 458B. As was mentioned last time, this would probably affect a very small amount of property ownership in the city of Hudson, but yet we're one of the few municipalities that hasn't approved this.
We're the last, actually.
The last, actually.
We're the last in Columbia County.
Yeah, Columbia County, so let's do it. Do I have a motion and a second? Rob? A second. Rich? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Kuyan.
Aye.
Halleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Present DPHR.
Abstain.
Carried.
And lastly, not for the meeting, but for this part of the meeting, proposed local law introductory number three of 2018, this amends the city code to increase the amount of fine to be levied for parking meter violations within the city. Ellen Thurston, do not look so depressed. It's only going up to $10 from eight. May I have a second, I mean, an introduction and a second?
Can I add to that for a second?
Yes, sure.
Okay. It also, it not only does it increase it from $8 to $10, again, to provide the administrative cost that the treasurer has to return $2 back to somebody who sends him cash, it also accepts the de minimis fees in this also. Thanks.
So this is the motion and a second to lay the proposed law, local law, on the old de minimis desks. Desks. Do I have a, Rob? And a second? Rich? Okay, we have some new business. First of all, I'd like to, since we do now have a tourism board, mention that Richard Volo is, the tourism board is, will be under the Economic Development Committee, which is chair, and he's working on a process for applying for, to become a member of the tourism board that works under his purview. I think the, Rich will come up with some guidelines for applications and let everybody know that he will accept applications, which he and the committee will vet. So that process can begin, we're going to have four... We're gonna have four members selected by the common council. And this is just to let everyone know that the process is now open and to contact Rich Volo. Similarly, we are gonna start the process for applications for the two, the twenty thousand dollars that is budgeted and used to be controlled by the no longer existing Arts and Entertainment Committee. And that application process will begin shortly. And I will, we will let everyone know when it begins. Thirdly, as we said in previous meetings, we would be, even though Tiffany's resolution was defeated, we would be monitoring what takes place at the Hudson Housing Authority. And to that extent, to that, in that regard, I attended the most recent Hudson Housing Authority meeting, and I'd like to say, report a little bit on what we discovered and heard. I think Tim Mattis, despite whatever you may have read today, is doing a swell job there. His, his report included quite a number of interesting bits of information. Everything from a plan for replacing all the windows in the buildings, which should be phenomenal for the residents, to replacing all the floors, which are currently vinyl, but it's gonna be replaced with much sturdier and long-lasting material that he described. And more kind of things that speak to the social dimension of Bliss Towers. They are partnering with DDS for case, a caseworker and other social services to perhaps have an office there, if not a regular time where residents of Bliss Tower, Towers can meet with representatives from the Department of Social Services and give advice on everything from, if there's addiction problems or anything else, or even helping with finances. As you know, or may know, HHA will also be partnering with us, the city council. And Rich Volo and John Rosenthal and others will be involved, not just on helping them to beautify the property once the fence is removed in April, but also to see that the computer room program gets back up and running, bringing the farmer's market to Bliss Towers in a fashion. I mean, among other things, those farmers would be happy to go down there at the end of the farmer's market and present their products at low prices. These are just some of the things that are in the works for Bliss Towers. So all in all, I think we need to, you know, stay with it, and I invite other councilmen to attend the HHA meeting. It's the, they're always on the second Wednesday of the month.
Yes, Rich, just to, just to clarify a little bit. One, we've been working, we're, I met with Tim and I met with the CAC, the Conservation Advisory Council, which is actually John. We're working, once the fence comes down, like, we're gonna try to figure out what to plant around there. At that point, bring together a budget proposal, and then we'll, that project will figure out where, where to get the money from, what to do, and how to put together a community gardening day, or however long it takes, to, to help beautify that. And number two is probably gonna happen with the farmer's market, is we have a tentative date in May. The farmer's market actually offers, and everyone should know this, farmer's market offers lots of government programs and subsidies. For instance, if you swipe your, like, a SNAP card, five dollars off the card, but it offers seven dollars in food tokens that you could then spend with local vendors. So, and there's all different other programs that people just don't know, so there's one thing to count too. So there's lots of different ways that people can get produce, and, you know, it helps everyone. So we'll probably end up doing an educational day there, evening, so that, so the farmers can help, we can help integrate the, the community and whatnot. And it's even a talk of, of a bus. The, the computer room, we definitely, there's an issue there with, with the computer room that's currently not accessible. I'm trying various sources to see. It would need to be monitored. We need some, we need volunteers or staff to help monitor that computer room. It would be a great homework kind of space for teens or something, so we're trying other ideas. So that's what it is.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? One other bit of business that's been raised by the council, I'm not sure how we wanna pursue this, but there is, has been some councilman, alderman, who would like us to revisit the question of having our own attorney. As you may know, previous mayor, Tiffany Hamilton, agreed to the council having its own attorney, put that in the budget line, the money is there. At the beginning of this term, it was agreed by the mayor and myself to combine those jobs. In retrospect, I'm not sure that was the greatest idea, but I've asked the mayor, I believe, three times in emails, to whether we can revisit that arrangement. Unfortunately for us, by charter, the mayor appoints all city attorneys. So whether we do get our own attorney or not is up to him. But I just, you know, wanted to have this discussion, an open, an open discussion about this and see, feel out the council. Is this worth pursuing? Do we want, and by the way, this is no disrespect to Andy, who previously was the city, I mean, council attorney, when there was a separate city attorney. So, council members, do we pursue this, or do we just continue the way we're going? Irene?
What, what are you thinking when you say pursue? How would we pursue?
More formally ask the mayor to, to let us do this again? John?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Make sure there's no potential conflicts. And also, we have specific issues, I think, that are affected by the mayor, the department and council, so I'm in favor.
I guess I can start by asking him straight up again? And if not, we can bring it back to the council and next meeting, perhaps come up with some kind of, you know, formal request. Sounds good? Yes, Irene?
So in the meantime, if we wanted to get legal advice about how to overcome the mayor's objections, who would we go to?
We could go to the, to NITOM, New York, you know, National Mayor. We really have no way to do that.
But since in the legislative, there are monies budgeted for council.
I know.
Wouldn't we be able to, to contract with a different?
Well, at one point, Andy graciously said to me that if we had a separate issue where, and of course, this would be that case, that that money could be allocated from that to get a determination. He wasn't thinking about something like this. I mean, there's a question of maybe, you know, some other kind of conflict. He would graciously allow that to be taken out of that fund.
Is there a reason why he would be opposed to us having a separate?
He being the mayor?
The mayor.
We'll have to ask him. Like I said, I've emailed him three times and not had, and have had no response.
So what's, will be our next plan of action? Cause I, it just, it seems confusing to me.
Yeah.
That we're asking about an ax. Like, shouldn't, can we just?
Just ask?
Yeah, should we, is there a meeting we can schedule? Like, I don't know, I feel like I'm visiting the wizard.
Yeah. Do you think we could have some motion tonight? That would?
You, you could always have your own discussion, make your own recommendation. There's nothing over that.
A better resolution to use the funds in the two thousand and eighteen budget allocated in the legislative to, for the council to contract with an attorney and send it to, to the mayor.
Okay. You wanna put that forward as a resolution?
I do.
Second?
I'll second.
Kamal, second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I'll go ask a question.
Yes, sure, always.
Prior to the agreement between you and the mayor, what was the discussion between you and the mayor, the reason not to have it initially? If that was already?
I will, it, it was done in the spirit of the mayor's one Hudson. We thought that we would be able to work together on all things in such a way that we would not need our own mayor, I mean, our own attorney. It was my mistake, admit it. As I told you guys all in, in an email, I should have pressed for it. But, in the spirit of things, I went along with it. On the other hand, it wasn't really, it isn't ultimately up to me anyway, because by charter, he appoints all attorneys. So it's, you know, it's a tough situation for us. Yes? Irene, could you restate the, the resolution? I think it was right there.
The council proposes to use the funds budgeted in the two thousand and eighteen budget under the legislative section to contract with an attorney for council matters as necessary, when necessary.
I believe you mean the cap number, because there's several counts. What, what mine are we?
The, it's the ten ten, please. Ten ten for the break, forty dot one.
Okay. Oh, Rich.
I'm sorry, one more question. We'll go back to the Arts and Entertainment Funds, the other one.
Yes.
What's the next step on that?
To develop, well, to send out a notice to all, everybody who's interested in applying. And I think it'll fall under finance. If you're, if you, you know, to, to actually take in the applications and process them, if you're, that makes sense. Why, you wanna do it? Okay, now, last bit of business, and they've been waiting patiently. I'm not sure exactly the presentation we're getting, but it was requested by the mayor. Dave Barnett from Gar Associates. And that other fellow is Justin Maxwell, our city assessor, in case you're wondering.
This, my name is David Barnett, I worked for Gar Associates, and we're part of the appraisal firm that was hired, actually, in seventeen originally. But what I'd like to do is, first of all, just to announce us as a company, and give you a little bit of a timeline as to the reassessment project and what to expect, and if you get questions from property owners, but really just to give you a, a brief synopsis of, of what a reassessment project is and how it relates to the city of Hudson. About two, three weeks ago, there was a, a letter that was mailed out to property owners, just announcing the project, letting property owners know that the first phase of the, of the reassessment project had begun. Really, any reassessment project is, is broken down into three phases. You have a data verification, collection phase, evaluation phase, and then what we call the informal review challenging phase. Right now, we're in the data verification, collection phase. It's a collaborative effort from the standpoint that Justin Maxwell and your assessment will go out and collect the properties or re-verify the properties. I should mention, Gar Associates was involved in the reassessment project in two thousand eight, or excuse me, two thousand and twelve. So it's kind of, at this point, an update as to some of the work that has been done. It's been, you know, six to seven year period in between. So along with verifying information and inventory, the valuation phase will look at sales, arms-length transactions, developed values for every property in the city. Gar Associates will be responsible for the commercial collection, any commercial properties and commercial valuation, along with consulting and assisting Justin Maxwell on the residential side. Couple key dates, these are statutory dates that happen every year. You have a tentative roll that's filed May first. So for these purposes, May first of two thousand and nineteen, the tentative roll will be filed. Of course, it'll be filed this year, May first of two thousand and eighteen. But essentially, for the reassessment project purposes, we've moved backwards from that May first, two thousand and nineteen date. With that, there'll be a notice, assessment notice, that'll be mailed out to property owners, March first of two thousand and nineteen. That really kicks off our, our final phase of the informal review. That notice will, it'll be a preliminary value, but it'll give property owners the opportunity to, number one, look at assessments that were developed, look at sales that were utilized, meet potentially with the representative from Gar to challenge their assessment informally. I mentioned that May first date, a couple scenarios. A property owner comes in, challenges assessment, it's reduced to where they think it's reflective of what their full market value is. There's no further action required. In the event that it's not reduced and they wanna go to the second step, that's done typically, I think, the fourth Tuesday in May, and it'll be third week in May. And that's done with the Board of Assessment Review. The Board of Assessment Review is independent of Gar Associates and, and really of your assessment office. They are all city residents, most, most times knowledgeable, or at least involved in the real estate field, but definitely knowledgeable about properties. That's the second step. The third step to challenge is additional litigation, small claims, Article seven proceedings. There's nothing mandating any municipality to carry their values at a hundred percent. What happens if you don't do regular maintenance in the interim years? Slowly but surely, inequities creep into any community, any municipality, markets change, neighborhoods change, property class, values within a property class change. So it's always prudent for any municipality to carry their values at a hundred percent, you know, and, and certainly maintain them. But at this point, you know, the city is, is at a situation where, or at least from a market perspective, that not only the inventory should be looked at, but also the values. I think overall, really for, for Gar Associates and the assessment office, there's an element of transparency that's gonna be throughout the project. So as we progress into different phases, typically, people don't become as engaged until they get a notice with a value and a hypothetical tax illustration. But certainly, using the avenues, whether it's a website, to notify property owners what area Justin's collecting, or what area we're collecting, that'll be done as we progress and move closer towards the end of the year, or closer to the mailing date of March first. There'll be press releases that are issued. Certainly, once we mail that notice, for internet users, information will be available online for, for strictly educational purposes, potentially an educational video. But certainly, they'll be able to look at other property owners' assessments besides their own. As I mentioned, sales that we utilize, the process to follow, you know, there'll be... As I mentioned, sales that we utilize, the process to follow, you know, there'll be a toll-free number or a number to call, where they can schedule an informal review. They always have grievance day, but really, the, the main theme is to develop an, an element of transparency. This is not always popular. Typically, what we see is, is a third goes up, a third stays the same, a third goes down. You never hear from the ones that go down, but that's, that's a general rule, a thumb. You know, the intention really of any reassessment project anywhere is to create a fair and equitable assessment. You know, it's not perfect, as I stand here. That's one of the reasons that you have an informal review period, and you have grievance, but at the end of the day, as a property owner in the city, you want to know that your value is accurate. That's our responsibility, that's the goal of the project, is to create an accurate and appropriate value. Not taxes, we're not naive enough to think that when people get their notice, they're going to wonder what they have to dip into their pocket from a tax liability. We don't establish budgets, thank God, and, and that's not really the role of the assessment office, but the value is. And that's something that is our responsibility. Once we do mail out that notice, we'll be available to not only answer any questions, but direct property owners to resources and the, the various steps that they'll have to challenge their assessment. Just a brief history about Gar Associates. We've been in, in business for 55, over 55 years, been doing reassessment projects of this nature for, for 35-plus years. We've worked not only within the city, but other municipalities in Columbia County, Ulster County, Schenectady, and Saratoga. We're very familiar with the area, we're very familiar with the properties, having been here previously, but certainly, this is our area of expertise, and we look forward to working not only with the council, but the property owners in the, in the city of Hudson.
Thank you. Any council, council members, do you have questions?
In terms of, in terms of your guidelines for how you do these assessments, for instance, there are many vacant properties, and I guess part of the question is, you know, what, what conditions and guidelines, I mean, when making the assessments in terms of like vacancy or occupancy, is that included when you make the assessment?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I, I should mention, there's the Office of Real Property Tax Services, which is an arm of Department of Taxation and Finance, they monitor the project. They monitor every assessment roll, but they'll be monitoring the project, we'll have regular assessment or status meetings with them, along with Columbia County Real Property. That's kind of a four to six week period. So in terms of the procedures and the standards and the requirements, besides real property tax law, they're sort of the, the watchdog. Now, as it relates to properties that potentially may be vacant, and I think you're just speaking of maybe just residential properties, certainly with commercial properties, if there's occupancies or, or things of that nature, we will be mailing, an additional mailing for commercial property owners to get income and expense information, which is relevant to an income-producing property. I think by and large, when we get out there, it's, it's a question of collecting the data and what would that, what would that property command on the open market? If there are, if there's deferred maintenance or improvements that need to be made, then that should be, the sales will indicate that. So I think for the first part of collection, or the first phase through collection, is inventorying these out properties appropriately, whether it's a fair condition, normal, maybe there's been some significant upgrades, and then, once we get to the valuation, the similar sales will indicate what that value should be.
So when you said that you put the assessment rolls together for 2019, but they retro back to 5-1 2018, is that like properties have changed hands? Is that where you're just getting the assessment roll, or what are you talking about, the 5-1 date?
The, the 5-1 date's a statutory date. So every year, you file a tentative roll. The, the city files a tentative roll, and it just happens to be made first. So for the purposes of the reassessment project, we kind of work backwards from May 1st of '19.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions? Does the public have any questions for Mr. Barnett? Yes, stand identified.
Hi, my name is Mark Morgan Perez, I'm a fourth ward resident. I just have a related question to data gather. I'm sorry, I have a related question to data gathering that I just want to raise. I don't know if it's the, where it fits, but since the redistricting, none of, none of the, none of the property wards have been updated. So right now, everything that shows up in the assessment roll, none of the wards have been updated for the properties, and so I'm wondering if that's something that the data that you gather will somehow feed into, so that for all of you on the council, you'll know which properties are a part of your ward?
That's something, certainly from a procedural standpoint, that, that can be part of it. Sure. I mean, technically, we go out and we'll, and I should mention this, by, by collecting the property, it's, we're inventorying the property, so we may be taking measurements, you know, dimensions, conditions and grades and, and any, I say improvements, but some amenities, but that can be, we can make that part of the process, which would be, I think, easy enough to do.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmen, aldermen, any new business that you'd like to raise? No? And lastly, if the public would like to speak about anything? Yes?
Carol, it's Rachel and I, Alan Street. I just wanted to clarify something that you said, President Di Pietro, when you were talking about the boundary correction, or the boundary correction.
That's not what I said. I said that not clearly identified in the supporting documents.
No, what, what I need to clarify is that it only affects the southern boundary and the western boundary. The eastern boundary has not changed, so those properties along Worth Avenue were in the original historic district.
And yet, they're not subject to the HPC currently?
They should be.
Well, that's your opinion.
No, it's not. If you look at that original...
No, I think if you look, ah, this is not the case, I'm sorry.
If you look at the original description...
I have, I've seen that, you know, I didn't want to even bring this up, but in fact, you, you signed, I don't have it with you. Let's say this for the, when we talk about this next time, but the council in 2006 actually put forth a resolution without the existing map. This map is not to be found. I think that this is purely my opinion at this point, but I think that's something that should be addressed when you rethink this for the public hearing. As you see, obviously, there's a question there.
Understood.
Because this would, in fact, even though supposedly Western Worth is under the HPC as we speak, those people don't know it, it's never been applied, they will find out with this new resolution if it goes through, they should be addressed. Because that's really how, you know, democracy works, by letting everybody know and have a say in this matter.
No issue with that.
I didn't think you did, Phil.
Pardon?
I didn't think you did, I mean.
I don't, and we'll, we'll try to figure out a way to populate the map with, with some way of individually specifying houses. There, there is a way that exists to do that, a little bit of technology, so we'll give that a go.
Great. It's not dead, by any means. No, no. Any other public comments?
April 28th, from 1 to 4, we're going to have the Oakdale cleanup. So anybody who wants to come, we'll provide garbage bags and maybe a barbecue, and it's going to be a good time. Wonderful. April 28th.
Anything else from the public? A motion to adjourn. Come on, second. Come on. All in favor, signify by the seat. Bye. Thank you.